Then from the one side.
Oh, my God, that was good. We heard that. Start over. Good?
Yes, I think so, yes.
Wait until you say go.
Okay.
All right. Okay, we will call to order city council work session and regular business meeting for February twentieth, two thousand and twenty five. It is six oh three P M. Lindsay, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Baker, Brown.
Here.
Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston, Minneke.
Yes.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm here. We have a quorum, so we'll move on. Item number two is a pledge of allegiance. Would please rise and say pledge of allegiance with.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number three is approval of the agenda. We are going to remove items seven I and seven J from the agenda. Would anybody like to move any of the consent agenda items to the regular agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the the agenda as amended?
Motion.
Second it? Okay, so motion by Brown, seconded by Minneke. All those favors say aye.
Aye.
I suppose same. That motion carries. Item four is dedicated work session. This is dedicated work session for mayor and council. The regular city council meeting will begin following this work session. Item A is the envision two thousand and twenty-three strategic visioning and goal setting review. So Luke and Lindsay have been working with department heads to share the strategic vision formulated by city council and myself. We felt that this work session will give us a chance to talk to any questions and establish clarifications so that we have a solid document to guide the city. Lindsay's going to step us through our visioning process, mostly for the benefits of the citizens present or watching online. And then we're going to go and discuss the goals and refine the two thousand and thirty-five strategic vision, which is called envision two thousand and thirty-five. It's a good name. Lindsay, floor is yours.
Thank you. So mayor and council had a strategic thinking and execution planning session last November. As you just said, mayor, it's been it's been titled envision two thousand and thirty-five, a pathway to Norwalk's future. Thank you. We're aiming to create strategic goals to achieve alignment and clarity for the city with specific actions and benchmarks to ensure implementation. And as you're all aware, we have our purpose statement here. Some of our past accomplishments included safety initiatives, staff development, infrastructure and growth, commercial development, the bike trail and industrial development while maintaining our tax levy. Some of our critical trends show stable growth, a desire for increased services, state legislators' goal to reduce local government, strong intergovernmental relationships, and overall citizen satisfaction. From our citizen survey, we compiled the top things that we feel like our citizens had expressed that they wanted or wanted us to improve, which was our street and sidewalk conditions, more economic development, and expanded park and rec programs of facilities. We also did a SWOT analysis to identify our strengths, opportunities, weaknesses, and threats. I'm not going to go over each of those, but you could reference back to this if you want to. Which brought us to our six top ten-year goals. So the first one is championed by councilmember Livingston, and it's the master plan and new urbanism. So execute a master plan and include the interstate thirty-five interchange and S-curve area, and to have a series of neighborhoods and commercial hubs. The second one is championed by Mayor Phillips, and it's the North River and I thirty-five interchange. So to develop those areas and to have a fully developed interchange on Interstate thirty-five. The third one is championed by Councilman Minneke, and his walkability and connecting neighborhoods. Kind of self-explanatory. The fourth is championed by Jason Brown, and it's how Norwalk is viewed. So distinct neighborhoods that are viewed as unique, fun, and proud to live in. The fifth is championed by Ed Cool and is Highway twenty-eight. So after D O T reconstruction, council wishes to have the city own Highway twenty-eight inside corporate limits. And this has probably been the one that we've gotten the most questions on from staff, so they might ask for a little bit more direction on that one. And lastly, championed by Brian Baker is balanced tax base, which this one rolled over from our two thousand and twenty-eight vision, which is to have thirty percent of our tax base be commercial or industrial. Then we defined how we were going to accomplish these goals, which is to dedicate staff time, implement communication strategies, prioritize projects and funds, identify and work with key stakeholders, and review our comprehensive plan. Then we set three-year, one-year, and ninety-day benchmarks with specific action items for each timeframe. Staff has already begun working on the ninety-day benchmarks. We've identified staff and departments to lead each of these projects or goals. I will then, after tonight, go in and add those projects to each department head's project management spreadsheet, and Ty will create a public communication plan to get it to get it out to the public. So same slide as before with our ten-year goals, but with the lead department above, department or departments, I should say, above those goals. Although there are one or two lead departments or people for these, it's important to note that accomplishing these will be a team effort and will require the help of numerous departments. Do these look okay as far as the departments that would take the lead on those goals? Yeah. Lastly, it's just questions, comments, concerns.
That's our question. Wayne, did you want to, do you want to bring something about the Highway twenty-eight question? Do you want me to?
No, I can bring it up. First, I just want to mention the walkability connecting neighborhoods. I think that's a great goal and a great vision that kind of aligns with a bigger picture ADA compliance regulations that we're trying to accomplish. So that is a great goal on there. Regarding the Highway twenty-eight, I had a few concerns with taking over the ownership of the highway. If we were to try to take ownership of it through Norwalk, it'll still be a state-controlled and owned highway north of Norwalk and south of Norwalk. The state will require, even if we own it, that the highway within Norwalk be operated and maintained to their standards and their rules. So the right-of-way will still have access restrictions. There'll still be the traffic control, still be in their D O T regulations.
Wait, wait. Go ahead, wait.
So they're still going to have authority over how it's operated. We won't have autonomous control over it. They're going to want it to be operated as a state highway. It'll be, there's some concerns with that. Another concern is, along with the pavement, it's probably going to come the rest of the right-of-way, the green space next to it, and the storm sewer, ditches, the squalls, the trees. It's not just the pavement. It'll be need to allow the entire right-of-way to be conveyed over. And if that's what we want, we can definitely work toward that. If the goal is just more maintenance or an improved rideability of the pavement, I think there is a way to do that. We can work with the D O T. We have a annual agreement with the D O T for snow removal and winter maintenance on the road. I think we could look at our annual agreement to try to encourage more maintenance by the state, or we can look at that to see if there's some options for encouraging them to maintain the road better. We might have other options to get an improved Highway twenty-eight without ownership of it. It's just kind of wanting to know what the goals were. Was the goal, did we want ownership of it? That's fine. But if the goal was improving the rideability, maybe there's another option besides owning it.
Here, could I comment?
Yes.
Okay, my understanding from our meeting was that the purpose of this was for me to put together a study group and to determine what the pluses and minuses were for city acquisition of this or state retention of it. And if it was for the city, at what point in time would that decision have to be made? Because obviously, the state, because you're going to rebuild that highway, probably goes soon. And my understanding is that nothing would happen anyway until after the state had rebuilt that highway. So the impression I had was that you wanted me, and the council wanted me, to go out and collect the best minds and information we can to provide information both ways, right?
Yeah.
So that we can make an informed decision. I think the points that he's made are well made. And I thought this was pretty good. But to be objective about it, you know, I think you have to consider both sides and all the pluses and minuses of maybe. You know, but anyway, did it, am I tracking is that what we were, what they're accomplishing here, or did I misunderstand?
I think that's what this does.
That's what I remember.
That's good direction. Yeah, yeah.
So I'll I'll task myself, I guess, to help to bring together that study group, and we'll probably take different people at different times, you know, because it's hard to get everybody in one room at one time. And try to get input in all that regard. Obviously, the big key is whether the state is looking at it or not. Anyway, I don't know if that helps it.
Mayor, what what I'm hearing in my words is I hear Ed and Wayne kind of saying the same thing. It's more of a, we're exploring what those options are for Highway twenty-eight as opposed to the goal being to take it over.
Right, the goal is information. The goal is information.
Yeah.
Making an informed decision.
Yes, I think we need to make the informed decision whether or not to take it. Right?
Yeah, that's it.
I think part of what you said at the department head meeting the other day, the mayor mentioned he felt like it was the overall condition of the road. The goal is to have Highway twenty-eight improved so that when we do a community survey and our citizens say, hey, the drivability of a bunch of our streets are in bad condition, Highway twenty-eight is our major highest-traveled roadway in town. Currently, it's not any part of our decision on when that gets approved. So you were just saying overall improved drivability of the highway.
Yeah.
And maybe that's part of that as well.
Yeah, that's right. Take a look at it and see.
Figure it out, yeah. So so we might even think differently about what the goal is. Because this says that we might think that the big goal is improved drive ability. How we get there gets to be determined, determined, and ownership might be the answer. Other things might be, that's a good point.
Explore options for Highway twenty-eight to improve drivability.
Or it's just, we want driveability improved, period. Like, that's what we so see to figure out that. Now, for some reason, my memory serves that I feel like Jackie was one of the most outspoken on this particular item. Well, I just agree because Jackie would never be outspoken. She would appreciate that comment, I'm sure. She couldn't be here today. I do remember she specifically brought that up as as something that she wanted to address, and she couldn't be here. She was traveling. She had a business thing that she just made it so she could be on the meeting. So I feel like maybe that's even something we, if she gets a chance to watch this, maybe she could give us some additional feedback. There are definitely some reasons why. Right? Yeah.
And, you know, I think the trafficability was one of them. Also, aesthetics was another one, you know, and community improvements. I mean, there there are all kinds of. But, you know, you have to weigh both ways, right? And the question is, you know, even even if we acquired that highway, would we still be able to do the things we want to do? Right? I mean, that's a question too. Right? So those are questions we need to have answered, but I would say if a person wants to sharpen the guidance on that, it probably wouldn't hurt anybody. But that's that's how I understand.
Lindsay, did you get a good rewording of that?
Um, I think so. I think we'll get some feedback from Jackie first, and then possibly either just add improved drivability to the statement or change it to exploring options for Highway twenty-eight to improve driveability.
We could probably, we could email Brian and Jackie both. That's not a quorum. So we could email both of them and say, hey, if you wouldn't mind, you know, watch this segment. They know about the background, all that good stuff, but we can get them to this point where they can listen to this conversation, and then they can give us some feedback as well. And ultimately, we'll come back to council and explain what what the result of that is.
That'd be good.
Wayne, does that give you some comfort of?
Yeah, very much. I like it.
You thought we were going to own that baby tomorrow?
Oh, no.
There's been some a lot of conversation about that.
I think I can hear well enough that I heard some reservations.
Yeah, yeah, I like the idea of exploring it more. Yeah.
There you go. Anything else, Lindsay? We'll go to the next topic, item B, businesses with online sales only. So council may recall that we discussed a local entrepreneur that is starting an online sales business. His business model did not originally include an immediate build-out of a storefront. He had hoped to get the business going and then add a storefront at a later date, and this has caused some frustration. Main issue to discuss tonight is if the city would be willing to adjust our zoning ordinance to allow online retail businesses in certain commercial districts without a storefront. So staff had difficulty reconciling this as it distribution. An issue to discuss tonight is if the
Sorry, I just muted somebody.
Okay, thank you. There's Catherine B. Or, okay. There's a few I'm wondering. Uh. Okay, staff had difficulty reconciling reconciling this as it appeared to be more of a distribution center rather than a retail storefront. Zoning ordinance does not specifically call out an online retail sales business. Well, this is a short summary. Luke, do you have some additional clarification?
I don't. I do know that Blake is here tonight. If you'd like him to give any more clarification, but I feel like you summarized it well.
Sure, Blake, do you want to come up and?
Sure.
If you if you want to. If you don't, that's fine.
Well, just a recap kind of like.
Yeah, come on up and
Sure.
State your name and have your
Thirty-one forty-seven Burrows Drive. Um. Yeah, so I have an online, I've had an online business for for a while that I've that I've ran, and now it's just, it's more of a focus for me. So I own the old Fairway Building. So I got a permit to build forty-five hundred square feet of it. It's basically office space, product storage space, whatever, like workspace for me and my business there. So um, as a start, now the rest of it is just, you know, it's the old grocery store building. So I mean, it's just basically a warehouse building sitting there. Already, so
Yeah.
My issue was, is I wanted to permit, I just wanted to get the permit to use the whole entire building. And while my business fits, you know, it's a hobby business, so it fits the C zero one-two designation, C two, you know, and C Y could go into the go into the space. So then I ran into obstacles because because I'm not open to the public. I was told I had to go into C three. So which seems, maybe I'm more of the extreme, you know, looking at it and being able to reflect on it for for a couple of weeks here, but, you know, you might have you know, a mom-and-pop store or somebody that, you know, like sells clothes, you know, might have people come into the store, but mainly does it online. Like, are you going to go tell them that they got to go into a warehouse building and find a thousand square feet to to lease out a warehouse building when they could, you know, fill a vacant space and
Okay, well, what we were talking about was the old Fairway Building and how it's C two right now, inappropriate uses in C two. And repeating myself a little bit, it's, I think, it's clear in the zoning code that C two does not allow warehousing as we're talking about here. I believe that definition of warehousing is also clear that this is a form of warehousing, receiving orders and storing property we sent out for online sales. What I was saying is that I'm not telling the council whether they should allow this or not, but in order to permit this, they, you know, the development department was correct in saying that you couldn't have that use currently in what zoning is. And the downside to it, I think, was kind of what I was addressing also. I mean, I could certainly talk about upsides and downsides, but the downside to this is certainly that this is a dedicated commercial area. And just like any type of zoning, you know, whether, you know, it's you know, it's it's a bank or it's a medical facility, when they locate someplace, they kind of depend on the neighbors too being the same use. So could the council rezone it? We'd have to look at and see what the copyright grant says, but yeah, legally, there's a way that you could probably get it rezoned to allow this purpose. But, you know, you still have all the arguments regarding spot zoning and everything like that, and we've already turned down in this area businesses in the past number of years that were, you know, a commercial use. That wasn't an industrial use, so. But, yeah, storage facility, there was a foggy daycare facility that wasn't allowed there. But with that being said, currently, our code would not allow this, and I agree with the development department with their answer that, no, you can't do that. And
If they sold on the site, if they had a walk-in customer and they sold product, would that be a commercial use?
If it was a clearly a commercial use, yeah. I mean, you couldn't just window dress it and say, oh, yeah, we got a, we got a door over there, and let's put ours, you know, based upon appointment only. I mean, if it's a legitimate business, you can't, you know, dress it up as a business, not have it be a legitimate commercial site. It's got to be a legitimate business, and, you know, what's the definition of that? You know, I can't tell you what that is, but you know, when you see it, I mean, if because clearly, it already looks like a commercial building, so it wouldn't be that hard to say, okay, I'm commercial. We're open for business whenever we get a customer that decides they want to come in, and it's never happened to have a customer come in. And I'm not saying that that's what's going on here, but, you know, clearly, there's a difference here. Commercial use is intended for onsite transactions you know, with maybe some sales. I mean, like O'Reilly's, certainly, I'm sure they probably have some orders where they send off parts places. And I'm sure there's other commercial air people that do that as incidental to the main business, but incidental to the main use, the main use is a commercial use.
If there was a walk-in business there, there was a viable part of it. It would probably seem more reasonable.
Yeah, with a commercial use, there's a certain allowed amount of storage in the back, whether you want to call it warehousing or storage. There's a certain percentage of storage that's allowed within the building when it's a commercial use. Clearly, not all of it can be out front. When it was Fairway, there was a certain amount of storage in the back, and like I said, O'Reilly's has a large portion, probably half their building is storage in the back. But, you know, that storage needs to be incidental to the main commercial use. It can't be a warehouse that might have cash register for that's incidental to the main use, which is warehouse. So could we, right now, the way our code's written, it doesn't necessarily talk about internet sales. It doesn't talk about internet businesses. Certainly, that can be addressed. I think most of those internet businesses, I think we probably have a lot of them in town, out of houses, is that certainly those are allowed to be sold out of houses and but right now, could we put in definitions that maybe help the code a little bit on internet sales? Yeah, we don't have something in there that says internet sales at this point in time, but we do have something called warehousing, which fits this definition when you, you know, if you got packages that you sell online and ship out.
Other cities, have they investigated what they've done with this?
Uh. I guess there hasn't been an investigation of it, but it'll, it's warehouse. I mean, it's pretty cut and dry. I mean, it's cut and dry what it is.
And this property's been zoned this way for a number of years now.
Yes.
Sure, the original store, right?
Right.
What, ten, fifteen years ago?
Yeah.
Obviously, Fairway is a huge draw for that whole area now. It's not there.
That's right.
And so it's a bad idea to do it because as it was put out by staff as well, you can get a bunch of internet businesses after full activity.
Yeah.
Except for vehicles coming in, picking up stuff, lost or whatever, delivery. Which could harm the last person left that's actually retail. Cost of it would be, I think, faster warehousing, cheaper. I could be wrong about that, but maybe the new stuff, more concerned about even old retail areas too, that would go in there. That'd be kind of a death nail. An area that so nobody's coming there. It's cheaper.
I would guess
It may be nice to have retail in there as opposed to internet thing where just not bringing anybody around.
Yeah, I would imagine if you talk to the businesses along that strip, they've already been impacted somehow by Fairway not being there. You know, and with that, it's been a long-term situation where there's no traffic in there. It would be a long-term effect versus a temporary effect for another commercial business to come in. But I think those are all kind of things that council would want to discuss if they were inclined to do a zoning change. There's only amendment process for changing zoning would be not unfamiliar, you know, unlike other ones that we've seen where, you know, council can initiate a rezoning on their own, and P and Z look at it, or the property owner can get a petition. That satisfies the requirements to to require a zoning consideration to go to P and Z consideration. If it's not in line with our comprehensive plan, or the council can't change that zoning unless the comprehensive plan was also amended, and I think that's the same process you've seen on the two items that were removed from the agenda today. We had a couple of items that were removed for rezoning where where we had a petition, but it's also not in line with the conference plan. I think the owners of that property wanted to kind of regroup and look at it again before we went forward.
So it's possible that the owner might decide to configure that business, so it might be able to be in that kind of an area, but that's entirely up to them.
I think the, and I, this more hearsay from talking to the development department was that originally, I think there was a plan submitted where there was going to be multiple retail businesses in there with maybe storage in the back. That was warehousing. I think the education was, okay, I feel to that as long as you have the retail parts out front, but then there'd be independent occupancy permits, you know, as the building built out in pods or whatever you call it, in sections, but I think that's changed at some point in time.
You know, I know that Luke Paris is on, and he, I don't know if he has additional comments or not, but I know that in my discussions with Blake, I think there were a couple of things. I don't know if I'm going to hit them just right, Blake, but I'm going to try to pass them along as one of the concerns was there, there's a plan at some point in time in the future to have a storefront. Now, I think you're actually moving
Now, I think you're actually moving forward with the storefront, but we still wanted to, to bring up the issue. Um, but I believe part of the requirement to achieve approval and accomplish what he's wanting to do immediately is if you install a storefront. Then you're able to check that box, you're meeting that requirement of the code. So I think that he's, you're moving forward of that to put in the storefront. It's still.
Cause you're saying there's not a limit on storage, if you have a storefront, don't percentage.
Right. From a. From a real general perspective, then somebody might say, well, how much time and effort does the city put in to make sure that storefront is active? And so somebody kind of has to some, not saying this coming, Blake, this is just more running through my own mind, uh, just to fully think through it. Is if there's a, the presence of a storefront, but there's not a lot of traffic, very minimal. But then you kind of feel bad from a government perspective saying, hey, do these things even though it's a.
You know, I, I think I'd probably feel more comfortable if the, if the owner worked with the staff. To see if there is a way to legitimately accomplish what it's after. I mean, it's possible, we'd like to have some other businesses in there too, you know what I mean? Not just your business, but some other businesses with you that may be subleased, you know? But we gotta, I, I think we owe it to the other businesses in that area to keep that area viable as much as we can. Cause they invested, you know, they came in, they invested. And they believed that it was zoned this way, it was going to stay that way, and that there was going to be traffic. Now, I mean, I, you know, we, we can only control what we can control, right? So we couldn't control the, the storm movement, and they needed a bigger area. So that's a big change, right? It's a big change for those businesses. So now if we just say, oh, we're just going to rezonate, I think we'd be kicking the legs off from under all those businesses and their investments. It just doesn't seem like a good idea to me. On the other hand, I, I would like to accommodate the person that owns the property. I mean, I would like to do that because we need people to invest in the community. So I'd like to see if, if you're interested, trying to work on a way to, to make it work. What would it take to make it work? So we're not letting down those other businesses, we're satisfying our code, he can work in what, what it is that he needs.
And I, and I believe for the most part. You have figured out a way working with staff of how to accomplish what you want to do, but also meet the intent, spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. So I think they've got there.
So you, so you think it sits right now where it would be without changing zone?
Right, this is, um, during discussions with Blake, it was, hey, a, a last ditch effort. Before you have to go down that path of installing the storefront would be to come to council for some alternative direction. And that, that's why we're having the discussion, if, if the end result is council says, hey. The ordinance covers it as best we can, please follow that guidance from staff. The other alternative would say, staff, hey, tell you what, take this to P and Z and explore making a change of our ordinance to allow what he wants to do. Those are kind of the two, two options.
And I think you're looking at my building, it's like a different scale, right? So like twenty-six thousand five hundred square feet is a lot different than some. A thousand square feet that might want to have a business of similar mind, there's going to be.
Right.
So much space in an area, they might need a little less space, I mean. You're excluding them too, so I just, I think that's the reason for discussion is, is are we really excluding everybody that might, you know. Need space, that's more retail, but it's online versus, versus, you know. Open to the public all the time, so what, where are you, where are you finding that balance? Like what balance does the city want? Well, cause it, cause it's a little gray, I mean.
Yeah.
But my personal opinion is traffic. Walk-in traffic, to draw a walk-in traffic, because I think that contributes to those other businesses in that area. And I'm sure that that grocery store did, there's no doubt in my mind, right? So when it left, then that traffic volume is greatly reduced, you know? And I think those businesses suffered a little bit because of that. So I would like to end at a place where we have some level of volume coming into that building. Traffic, right, of people and cars driving by the other businesses. Well, I think I'll have lunch, I want a taco or whatever it is, right? But it would be helpful to the other businesses too. I try that, I'm just one. I don't know what you guys think too.
I feel your way.
I can be a two-way street though. Seventeen pieces of points and down, I don't want all the traffic, don't buy. Wins, so it's right by my place, so don't allow the piece of place.
Yeah, but we don't control the kind of, I mean, you know, right?
Well, you're trying to tell me I need traffic in my building in order to.
I, I don't care what you do in that building, as long as it's legal, right? But I want traffic in that building if it's in that zone area, you understand what I'm saying?
It just might, yeah, I mean, nothing's going to replace the traffic fairly, so.
No, that's true, but we don't have to, we need to be smart too. Right, that's all I'm saying.
Right.
So, I mean, you knew that was zoned that way when you bought it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's why I'm at, I don't know what everybody else thinks.
I feel the same way. The bigger picture standpoint, I think we need to consider not having internet sales in C two district, not just this one piece, but just period. So. It's already excluded though, right? So, yeah.
Right now warehousing is excluded, so, you know, I think. The definition to warehousing clearly fits when it's something that's exclusively internet sales. And the reason why I worded it that way, but you could have a hobby store that their main business is, or gun store, their main business is to sell a retail. Product out of their, out of their store, except you might still have some internet sales involved. I mean, like I say, it would, the warehousing has to be incidental to the main commercial business. Not the other way, when incidental, that means the primary purpose shouldn't be warehousing, the primary purpose should be. A commercial use, which is not warehousing. You know, somewhere that, maybe I'm talking too much, but it's similar to a home business now, you know, home businesses are allowed under Iowa code, but. You can't move somebody out of the home and make it a home business, still have to be legal, I mean, the primary use of that structure is still at somebody's home. And so the primary use on that is home, and a home business is incidental to being a home, so somebody can decide to. For instance, an internet sales thing out of the basement, which legally they can't lose their home, but if they move out, they can't turn that building into. Exclusive warehousing and internet sales.
So what I'm hearing is, is that there's no, there's no desire to look at, to changing zoning. To allow the internet business in a C two area.
Right.
You good with that? Do we need anything else we need to go over?
No.
Okay. Uh, item C is talking about Fager's night, I think, uh, Brian wanted to talk about that, since Brian's not here, I think we'll. Remand that over to the next work session. All right. Okay.
Man, were we supposed to decide something for what we just talked about? Or were we just having a conversation?
I, I would think that what would happen is if it was something that wanted to actually bring onto an agenda item. At the end of the meeting, when council members make motions to have it appear on a future agenda item, certainly, council member could ask that. Put on there for official decision or official deliberation.
Well, I do, it's always difficult when you have an actual unit being involved in the process.
Yes.
But when you think about how that play, what's intended there, um, that's not it. And that's not a personal thing, like, it's just, that's not it, sure. And, you know, you can, you could make an exception because we're like, I really like that guy, and it doesn't seem like we're really. You know, nobody's really buying that spot and, you know, putting something in there with the kind of traffic we wish it would. But it's when you begin to play that out, that it's like, hey, in general, do we like that idea? No, you know, and so it's, uh, I think there are times for exceptions. Right? It's deciding whether or not this is, uh, the right spot, the right time. For something that we would say, we're, we're fine with that exception. And, uh, I, I feel like what I heard George say is. We sure would love to try and figure out, hold out hope for a business that would draw traffic.
All right. Okay, item number five, welcome, yes, some public comment, thank you for being here tonight, participating in the meeting. Uh, we'll open up the desk for comment, if you want to address, uh, myself or city councils. Uh, this would be for non-agenda items, give you a three-minute time limit, realize we can't take action on those, on what you're talking about tonight. Because they aren't on the agenda, and that would be, talking about them then would be in violation of open meetings law. Also, I'd like to comment on any item in the consent agenda now would be the time, so anybody, any takers? I'm only going to look for takers within the room at this.
Maybe this is a good time to say it, just so you know, anybody that's showing up asking for access.
Yes.
I have a feeling it has to do with the fact that we posted on social media, the link immediately before we got started, that we're getting so many of them. So I'm communicating with anybody, any participant in the waiting room to get feedback on what agenda item they're here for. And letting them know that they can access the meeting via YouTube streaming.
That's awesome.
Barry is still trying to join, so I've asked Elliot to let him know to try via calling, so you may see a phone number pop up there.
Six one four area code. So just as a sideline, Lindsay, if you look at the host tools. Button, there's only two things I'm allowed, I've, I've allowed, that's chat and to unmute themselves. I think. For now, that would be okay. But if we want to, there we go. Uh, we want to pull off unmute themselves, we can do that at some point. Okay, that was sure fun. Uh, item number six, consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, motion by cool segment by mine a key, Lindsay, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Mine a key.
Yes. Most carries, item seven, all the new business for consideration, discussion and possible action. Item A is a continuation of a public hearing regarding a zoning amendment to amend the Maple Heights Plan Unit of Development regarding location. And type of residential uses, so we'll continue the public hearing at six fifty-nine PM. Elliot, I'm going to let you take this one.
And I'm going to pass the baton off to Paris if he's audible.
I am, y'all can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, I'm on Zoom, appreciate the opportunity to do this, I've got to step out to my son's band concert here in a bit, so. Um, but I wanted to walk through this, I've worked a lot with, uh, Lone Tree on getting this, uh, ready so they can take their next steps in development. Um, we have the Lone Tree folks online as well, um, to answer some questions, and there's a couple of aspects of this that. Um, maybe warrant some discussion and really some decision points. Um, so want to start with, uh, really, this is looking at, uh, a few different things. Um, firstly, it's mainly identifying where some specific use types will be, if you can go into the ordinance. Um, we can take a look at some maps, um, but it's identifying some alley-loaded product, uh, in the northern side of the development. Uh, a townhome area, some traditional single-family areas. Um, and then, uh, again, just increasing some numbers of those types. Um, if you could go down Luke to page, I believe it's twenty-six. So I included in the staff report, the, uh, original P U D, just, uh, if anyone wanted to reference that. Um, but let's go down and take a look at that initial map, um, sorry, it was a long document. Um, but there you go, uh, go back up to the parcel map, uh, the one right above that, uh, I guess it was twenty-five. So, um, right now, the P U D, uh, we're primarily in this amendment talking about parcel B. Yeah, maybe you can open it up and turn it there. We're talking about parcel B and parcel F, and while Luke gets that, uh, uh, oriented correctly. Uh, parcel B in the original P U D allowed for a mix of densities R one, R two and R three. And then parcel F, and parcel B was on the west end of the project, parcel. Uh, I'm sorry, parcel B was west end, parcel F was a traditional single-family, uh, type, uh, zoning development. Um, and that was on the far east end of the project, and the pond kind of separates the two. So we're just talking about refining kind of what the land uses are here and what projects and things might go there. Uh, if you scroll down to that next map, that's kind of sideways, you can see what their kind of initial layout was, there were some townhomes that were kind of on the exterior of the development. Some of those alley-loaded products in the center on the, and that's all on the west side, and then on the east side, you get over to, uh, more of a traditional suburban. Single-family development, um, but again, with some, uh, options to do some of that R two or R three stuff on the far east end. So if we jump back up to, I believe it's page, uh, seven, um, or I'm sorry, eight, um, one page off today. Um, page eight is the layout that they're proposing, and what we've done is, um. To get granular with what the different develops are, parcel B, we've split into two, so it's parcel B one and B two. Um, and then the rest of the west side of the development gets zoned as parcel F. Um, so to talk quick about B one, B one is that, uh, uh, what do we call it? Uh, alley-loaded villa project, project, and so what you see there, um, is a public street to the south of B one. And then there's a public street to the west of that goes up with parcel A, and then there would be private drives that came between these units. Um, and then the other areas, so like that would be a private drive. But then the kind of opposing one, which might normally be a public street, would be a green space with a walkway, so. Um, some of these units would face out to a public street to the, uh, far west, and then the other, all the other units would have kind of a front door. That goes out to a green space with their, uh, access to their property on the, the alley. Um, from like a car access. Um, the other thing in parcel B is, uh, you see the north side of that development has a bunch of smaller lots, and then there's kind of an area that's right above parcel C. Um, we do allow for some traditional townhomes to be in parcel B one, um, in those two areas. Um, just because of the shape of everything and the layout, it worked better that way. So that's B one, then parcel B two is a more traditional townhome development, again, uh, alley-loaded, so things have. Uh, uh, car access to the alley, um, the space in between things, um, it can in the center of B two. Is again, another greenway, walkway path, um, that provides access to every, uh, unit from a walking perspective. Um, and again, those are just traditional townhome, similar to what you will probably see in the brownstones or. Or lots of our other, uh, townhome developments. Um, and then parcel F, which is the remainder of this original parcel B on the west side of the development, is, uh, single family. Um, so that went to just a normal, um, single-family lot for what parcel F was. Um, and then if you can go to the east side of the development, um, we didn't change parcel F over there, but we did. Um, definitively call out that parcel F can also have some duplex units, some R two duplex units. And those are shown ghosted in there on the far east side of parcel F, those smaller lots. Um, so that's really the. So that's really the, how the layout of the development's changing with this PUD request. The other two points that are included, if you go back over to parcel B1, the developer has asked for some variations to what our garage requirement would be for a single family unit. So for a single family unit, we typically require a two car garage. Only in parcel B1, they're asking for the ability to have, uh, units that have no garage, a one car garage, a two car garage or, or more, a three car garage potentially. So that's different than what our code would have. Right now, uh, the ordinance before you does call out, um, that that can happen, so that's how we've written the ordinance. Let me, I got to get to the right spot in my sheet. The way it's worded is that, uh, each unit is required to have a garage, uh, or 75% of the units are required to have a garage and, uh, no more than three, uh, units without a garage can be adjacent to one another. So trying to understand that we don't want to have a bunch of the no car garages all in one spot, um, so that, you know, there may be only be three in a row. And then, you know, again, a minimum of those B1 units, a minimum of 75% of them have to have a garage. With any townhome that's shown in B1 or B2, um, they're not requesting for no car garage stuff. So any of those would have a single or a double car garage, which is what our code currently requires for a townhome. So that's garages. And then the last thing that we have here is talking about ADUs and, um, we've had a lot of good discussion with, uh, Lone Tree and staff and, uh, P&amp;Z, we had some good discussion about it. And really, I think, uh, I'll let them maybe talk from their side more. From the, the staff side, and I think even when the city approved this PUD, there was a desire to, um, really look at having an ADU somewhere, we'd had a, a resident come in and ask the city to allow them on residential properties by right and we kind of felt like that was maybe jumping too far into the deep end. And then this opportunity presented itself and we thought, well, that would be a good place to give it a try and Norwalk would be a brand new development. One of the conditions that we put in this PUD originally was that the ADU had to be owner occupied. Or rather that the lot had to be owner occupied for them to be able to, uh, use an ADU. From the development standpoint, and, and Jameis or Jenny can talk more about this, there were just some concerns that, you know, they wouldn't be able to market that or, or that it wouldn't work for them from a business standpoint of selling somebody a property with an ADU. And then if that person wants to then move to a bigger property or move on in Norwalk or, or do something, now they don't have the right to rent out the house and the ADU. So that's something to talk about, I think they're willing to, uh, give the ADUs a try in B1, um, if we can come to an agreement on how that language be written. Right now, the, uh, what P&amp;Z recommended and what's in the, uh, PUD would allow for ADUs, um, without being owner occupied, uh, main unit on the lot. So that's kind of where we sit with that. They can, uh, talk a little bit more on their side, uh, about their thoughts on that, but I think collectively, it's just a matter of, we're willing to do what council wants to do on this one. From a staff perspective, we think it would be a, a good thing to try as far as housing affordability goes and, and housing diversity, but, uh, certainly, understand if, if there's concerns about that. So with that, um, I will answer any questions and I know Lone Tree is on the line as well.
Uh, I think it's a good idea. So it's innovative, it's, it's, it's something new. You know, our good friends at P&amp;Z, you know, recommended it, that always matters to me, I'm not saying we got to go along with them, but we asked them to do the job, they've done it and I'm sure they took this very seriously. I think staff is also probably excited about this as well. Yeah, it's, it's different, it's unique and, uh, I'm, I'm glad we've got a developer that's, you know, saying, hey, we'd like to try something like this. Yeah, I know Brian's not going to buy one of those houses that doesn't have a garage, but.
However, I happened to go wander down Wakanda, they trying to cut across country and, uh, saw some houses that didn't have garages. And there's, I know there's some on the east side of town that doesn't have garages, so I don't have a big problem with not having a garage. I think they're going to put a slab of parking cars up, please. So it's not so much on-street parking, am I correct on that, Luke?
Yes.
Said he was available for questions, but he was kidding.
So I, yeah, then the ADUs, I think that's, uh, yeah, uh, I get the idea they can't decide if they own it or rent it. Yeah, you know, maybe chat or, so, yeah, I'm, I think it's a good idea.
I recall the discussion we had earlier, uh, in an earlier design. Cause I know, you know, we traveled these two miles. We were looking for, uh, different designs for how we might put developments together for affordability as well as walkability. And we decided that a new development would be the best place to try that experimentation. Might not work real well and just etc. So I don't have any problem with this because of that. Now, the question about owning and renting, right? I don't know quite how you'd make that one. I mean, you can say that first, first in the field, but I guess he's still there. But can you really put a tie bar on an owner not being able to rent something out of here? Like it's into all those private property issues.
I think they left that out for her specifically. I think they left that out, should be, they could be a renter or, or a investor or an owner.
Yeah, it's, it's difficult for a city to legislate owner occupied only, in fact, there's some pretty direct state statutes that prohibit us from doing that. Certainly a developer can put whatever restrictions they want on it themselves. So if they were to put restrictive covenants on it, saying owner, owner occupied only, they could certainly do that.
So if we move this as it sits right now, that would not be a requirement in.
That's right, I think P&amp;Z's recommendation was not to have an owner occupied requirement. Relating to that.
That's correct, the, uh, the way the, uh, ordinance is worded right now would allow for ADUs without the primary residents being owner occupied.
Uh, was there a reason for that, Luke?
The reason for why we have it now was, uh, that's kind of what the, uh, Lone Tree Development Group, uh, suggested, they would need to feel comfortable building them.
Yeah, and, and you and Elliot are good with that?
Correct.
Okay.
I'd be kind of excited to see what they come up with. I mean, it looks like a lot of variety of housing types here. And it's pretty well divided up, the way they've got green spaces and the pond and, you know. And I don't hear the public works director going crazy about the private streets, so.
All right. Lindsay, have we received any oral or written comments on this?
We have not.
Do we have any public comment on this?
Harry Nun, I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:14 PM. Item 7B is the first reading. An ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Norwalk Iowa by amending the Maple Heights Plan Unit Development regarding location and type of residential uses. We just had a public hearing on this amendment to the Maple Heights PUD. Luke or Elliot, do you have anything to add?
Nothing else unless there's questions, I'll answer them this time.
Discussion from council or public. Harry Nun, can I get a motion to approve first reading as presented?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, my law cool, seconded by Brown, Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Cool?
Yes.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
All right, most carries, item seven C. It's continuation of public hearing regarding an amendment to the Orchard Hills Planned Unit Development related to high density residential and neighborhood commercial uses in PUD land use parcel one. So we're going to continue the public hearing at 7:15 PM. Luke or Elliot, I'm going to let you take this one.
Yep, so I'll go ahead and do this one, um, request here, uh, this is one that Barry Accountist is, uh, is on the call for, so six one four area code. He told me he's good, so, um, we'll proceed with this one. I'm, I'm kind of looking at item seven D while talking about this. Basically, we got a request for a PUD amendment in Orchard Hills, PUD parcel one. The current Orchard Hills PUD allows for R4 high density or C1 uses, but requires an amendment to the PUD affirming said uses, uh, whatever they end up being. So, um, the request tonight mostly deals with the southern 2.75 acres, which is just over half of the parcel. And the request is to allow for the construction of the concept you see before you, which is a 62 and up residential project with, uh, two row houses, um, the buildings that are oriented north-south and then a three unit, R4 building with an elevator, um, oriented east-west. This concept originally had the larger building oriented north-south directly adjacent to Orchard Hills Drive. They decided to revise the concept and bring, bring this one back, uh, to P&amp;Z. So P&amp;Z reviewed and approved this one. Something that's worth noting as far as the rezoning, technically as a PUD amendment, uh, being a rezoning, this is in our future land use map as new urbanism. So something that we wanted to have them do is put the parking behind the building, fronting the street, and so we designed setback regulations to allow for that. That's what they've produced here, so, um, staff is pretty satisfied with the layout. Uh, the one thing that is a little bit different from typical zoning for a property like this is they have 72 parking spaces, while code normally would require 96. I believe with Alice Place, that was kind of the first senior project where we looked at, um, doing a pretty significant cut to the number of spaces needed in addition to, uh, amending our code to not require garages for senior projects. So if you're, uh, wondering about that element of the site plan, uh, or excuse me, the concept, this is not a site plan. That explains, explains that piece. The reason that we split this into parcels one A and one B is because the first time this, uh, came to the attention of council, uh, there, there was emphasis on retaining commercial uses in the remaining ground. And so that's the way that I have written the amendment here to, um, basically just keep that northern 2.73 acres the same as it is right now and still require an amendment affirming a use there. The application is only for the southern halves and the owners of the remaining 2.73 acres have decided not to move forward with any more detailed amendments at this time. So we're not touching that, um, it's just being cut off from parcel one B. Minor detail in the staff report, I found out while, um, earning my way up to full-time employment with the city, that a amendment to this PUD at some point deleted the land use table for the entire Orchard Hills development. And so this thing is putting it back in there, the way that it was supposed to be. You know, originally from the beginning, it was inadvertently deleted, so we're putting it back in there, um, along with this amendment. So I'm happy to take any questions and, uh, we do have representation for this item here on the call tonight.
Does it, Alice's place seems to work with not as much parking?
Or no complaints?
And like no garages?
I like this, the design of it. I thought the last council meeting or council meeting, uh, or two ago, we talked about the north side as well and we restricted that, or maybe we just talked about. Yeah, like commercial. But you're saying we're going to leave that open now or?
The applicants are not choosing to move forward with making that change right now. So we're just leaving that alone, they will have to come back and do another PUD amendment at a future date to affirm uses there. Which they've, we've talked to them several times, uh, leading up to this meeting. Grant Wright, who we heard from earlier, um, is kind of spearheading the real estate side of that, so he's aware of, I don't know what the city's expecting.
We made no decision at that time.
No.
Okay, thank you.
What can go over in the panhandle?
An access easement for Public Works to get to the water tower. And if an accessory building of some sort will fit in there, then that, um, it's technically rear yard. So, um, it's not a very wide envelope, I think it's about 45 feet in width, my understanding is that's the geometry of the site. Just to get the right amount of space under control for the applicant.
Okay. So no apartment building could be put over there?
Not with the current PUD language, no.
But if we accept this PUD the way it is, which is proposed, then that could be, right?
No, so I wrote the, uh, the language I wrote for this says that this concept will be predominantly followed at the site plan stage. So if, if we get a site plan back showing four buildings, we're going to make them come back and do the PUD amendment, just like what we're doing right now.
Good. Assuming the city owns everything south.
Yeah, so if you square this rectangle off, the remaining space around the water tower is public ground.
Lindsay, have we received any oral or written comments on this?
We have not.
All right, any public comment? Harry Nun, we're going to go ahead and close public hearing at 7:22 PM. Item seven D is the first reading of an ordinance amending the master plan on rules, regulations and guidelines for the, excuse me, for the Orchard Hills Plan Unit Development as contained in ordinance 04-05, uh, we just had a public hearing on this amendment to the Orchard Hills PUD. Elliot, you got anything to add? Any discussion from council, further discussion or public comment? I get a motion to approve first reading?
Well, I'm glad to hear that it's nailed down what we're looking at there and that we can't be surprised. Cause I don't want to be surprised, like we were before. So I'll move this with that understanding.
Sounds good, dug it. All right, so motion by Cool, seconded by Mineki, any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Mineki?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
All right, most carries, item seven E is resolution initiating rezoning, referring the rezoning proposal to the Norwalk Planning and Zoning Commission and sending a public hearing regarding the proposed zoning amendment to the Norwalk zoning map by changing 7680 County Line Road from AR Agricultural Reserve to RE1 Rural Estates. Elliot, I'm going to let you take this one.
Yep, so this is a property that was developed back in, uh, in a subdivision that was approved, I think, 1978 and then subsequently annexed into the city, so it defaulted to ag zoning. The owners want to do an expansion to the house that ag zoning setbacks don't allow. It was developed in a, in a, in a, in a fashion that resembles RE1 Rural Estates. So if we rezone to that class, they would have enough setbacks based to do their expansion.
All right, any discussion, council? Or a public comment? I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mineki, seconded by Cool, any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Mineki? Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
All right, most carries, item seven F, resolution initiating rezoning, referring the rezoning proposal to the Norwalk Planning and Zoning Commission and sending a public hearing regarding the proposed zoning amendment to the Norwalk zoning map by changing 1421 Sunset Drive from C2 Community Commercial to IPUD Infill Plan Unit Development with C2 uses. Elliot?
Yep, so this property is the southwest corner of High Road and Sunset Drive, it's where the Rodney Albert's house, uh, was demoed within the last 30 days or so. Yep, so this property is the southwest corner of High Road and Sunset Drive. It's where the Rodney Albert's house, uh, was demoed within the last thirty days or so. Currently zone C two, so the setbacks take up about ninety-four percent of the parcel area. In order for it to be redeveloped, we've got to get creative, so we've got an infill plan unit development ordinance drafted up that we're ready to take to P and Z if, uh, council elects to send it there.
All right. Discussion from council? Public comment? And I get a motion to approve resolution as presented. Second, motion by Brown, seconded by Mineke, any further discussion? Lindsay, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Mineke.
Yes. All right, most carries. I was waiting for another one. There's usually more here. Uh, item seven G, as resolution accepting infrastructure and approving the final plat marketplace at Echo Valley Platte five. So all the infrastructure's in place for this. We need to approve the final plat to create a buildable lot.
Exactly.
That, any, anything else?
Uh, I, I made an error by saying accepting infrastructure. There's nothing to accept. So.
All right. Uh, any discussion from council or public comment? All right, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
George. No.
Motion by Cool, seconded by Brown. Any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Cool?
Yeah.
Mineke?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
All right, most carries. Item seven H, resolution approving the site plan, uh, Pizza Ranch. Our previous action created the buildable lot where the new Pizza Ranch is going to be constructed. This is approving the site plan. Elliot?
Yep, so Pizza Ranch Site Plan, um, is that's the item. Um, it's pretty self-explanatory. I think it's about a twelve thousand square foot building. Um, I did a little parking analysis in there, kind of explaining how the, the arcade space inside there. Um, we didn't feel it was appropriate to factor that into the parking calculation, just because that's predominantly a use for people who don't drive. They're typically passengers, so, um, we thought that may, made sense to, uh, to omit that. Something we've decided to be a bit more deliberate about in our staff reports is anytime something that council can waive is being proposed, we're starting to list that in staff reports, so, um, the only thing that isn't necessarily zoning compliant but waivable by council would be the space count for parking. They're proposing a hundred rather than the typical one hundred and fifteen. We think that's appropriate because Marketplace Drive was designed specifically so that people could park on the street. So we think that some of the spaces adjacent to the site can factor into that number. Don't have a whole lot else to add other than, um, the folks working on the architectural elevations did a good job indicating, uh, sightlines. That's something we don't see too often in some middles, so that's good to see. And I've got nothing to, further to add, but happy to answer any questions if I can.
All right, discussion questions from council? Or any public input?
The treatment on this building will be similar to what's up there now in that area.
Mostly, um, yeah, mostly stone composites. Uh, and a little bit of engineered wood composite.
Yeah. Hey, want to make, anybody want to make a motion? Okay. Motion by Mineke, seconded by Cool, any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Mineke?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
All right, most carries. Item seven K, it's first reading of an ordinance amending chapter ninety-two water rates and chapter one seventy-seven rates and fees, providing for amended secondary water or irrigation rates. So irrigation continues to drive up water usus within the metro area. Uh, in summer, as a metro area, we use about two times the amount of water than during winter. Also, high nitrates lower the amount of water that Des Moines Water Works can produce, and we're running into times where we're looking at implementing water-saving procedures. It is very costly to the overall metro to create more capacity. Purpose of this rate change is to offset the overall cost of producing more water. We also realize that a secondary positive impact is a possible decrease of water usage. We are asking council to change our irrigation meter rates to an inclining block schedule and to use that rate schedule all year round. Gene, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, as you know, we have, we charge two dollars on top of the regular rate right now, two months out of the year. Last year, irrigation was about eighty-one million gallons, um, and that two months, the was about twenty million, so there's about sixty-one million dollars of irrigation, or million gallons, sorry, of irrigation that we did not charge for. I think the best way to put this is, um, on an average day, we use, the city, entire city uses about a million gallons. During these high peak times when we're using irrigation, we use about two million gallons. And of our fifty-three hundred meters, about twelve hundred of them are irrigation. So twenty-two percent of the people here using irrigation are kind of increasing the cost for the entire city. So we think it would make more sense to charge these, uh, irrigation rates. And the schedule, I don't think we mentioned that, um, would be zero to six thousand gallons. That'd be one point two five times the regular rate, six to nine thousand gallons, one point five times the regular rate, and above nine thousand would be two times the regular rate. The main reason for doing this, um, is Central Iowa Water Works. Not one of them, it's just one of the additional reasons, I should say. Uh, Central Iowa Water Works is going to be doing an expansion of Saylorville Plant. It's about a hundred and sixty million, ten million of that will be Norwalk's portion. You just think about a twenty-year S R F loan at three percent. It's about six hundred and ninety-five thousand a year. If we go a thirty-year loans, about five hundred thousand a year. These rates just get us a little bit closer to paying, uh, making those payments. It doesn't cover it completely. But it will help in that regard, and maybe hopefully people will pay attention a little bit more. I'm sure there's some overwatering, uh, that doesn't need to happen, uh, so just trying to offset those costs. One thing we did talk about, and I'm not going to ask you to do it tonight because I don't like to throw this on you, but we charge an availability fee by meter size. We put that in place last April. And through our discussions about this, uh, we realized we only charge for one meter and we just charge whatever the larger meter is. So if they have a three-quarter inch regular meter and a one-inch irrigation meter, we charge the availability fee only on that one-inch meter. We might be bringing back, we have an availability fee for irrigation meters as well as the base meter, so that might be something to think about. Um, I calculated that would be another hundred and thirty thousand would really help go toward offsetting the costs that we are experiencing due to irrigation. And I know that, um, finance work group reviewed this and admin policy work group reviewed this and, um, both recommended that we move ahead. You have any questions?
I mean, how'd you, how'd, how'd you come up with that numbers there at one point? Two times rate, one point five, two times.
You know, we really just kind of made some comparisons with other cities.
Yep.
And, um, there's no consistency across the board. We just thought we would ease into it, and we thought, you know, if you only use so many, maybe not get, uh, dinged as much as someone who uses twenty thousand. So if you're only using five thousand to irrigate, maybe you pay a little less than someone that uses twenty. We have some people that in the month of July will use thirty thousand gallons for irrigation.
What's the average use per household?
For irrigation or for household usage?
Household use.
Overall.
I don't have that because you know why? It ebbs and flows from year to year.
Yeah.
You know, last year wasn't, the beginning of the year was really wet, uh, so it was less, and then toward the end of the year it got really dry. Year before was super dry and, um, so I don't, I don't really have that number.
I suppose maybe I'm wondering a little bit. I'm, I'm on the committee that talked about this, so, uh, it's like, um, you know, is, if, if some people are using twenty to thirty thousand, like that's not nine thousand. And it's like, so they're paying the same rate from nine to fifty thousand, whatever they want. So I'm wondering if the, if there's partially a goal of reducing water usage. If, uh, if we, like, if the rate would be even higher at some point too. Because there's kind of like, wow, that's excessive.
Right. I mean, we're, we're not really trying to penalize people who irrigate, uh, but we are just trying to recover our costs. This is maybe a way to start looking at it, see what happens the first year, maybe we can increase it after that.
What I'm thinking about there is, let's say we, we also want to help people not use as much water. So like, again, it would be the creation of some sort of fund that would be, that, that our residents could take advantage of to, like if they want to do something to their lawn that would reduce the need for water, that we might be able to be helpful, like, uh, some sort of a carrot there.
Yeah, we have talked about programs. We kind of have a program in place that Elliot oversees. Uh, we don't get much, um, traffic there. We don't get many requests, um, like water barrels and soil control, soil erosion control and, or rain barrels, I should say.
And it's like a soil, um, what's the word I'm looking for?
Soil quality restoration.
Yes. So we do have some programs in place to encourage, and if you do that restoration, you have more ideas, then you end up with more topsoil, so you don't need as much irrigation to keep that on. So we do have that available.
Okay. Yeah, maybe it would be matter of like, if we wanted to make this a big deal overall to the city, there would almost be a marketing game plan that would be, hey, we want to help people use less water for their, for their lawns. I, I get, that may be just too big of a discussion on this.
Well, I, I could certainly talk to our, um, marketing and communication staff and see if they could come up with some ideas on how to try to promote some of those programs at the same time that these rates are going into effect.
Yeah. And if we find then that they're being more used, then maybe we could think about how to make more dollars available, I suppose.
That'd be a good problem to have.
Yeah.
Send me an email to remind me of this program because I, I might take advantage of it. Because I've turned off my irrigation system the last two years, three years now.
Hit your water barrel.
And I mean, the lawn in the back looks very interesting by the end of the summer, but it's, I, I can't believe how much I would have to water to like, keep it clean.
Yeah.
So it's like a lost cause.
To add on to, well, go ahead.
No, I'm done.
You're done. So to add on, that, so that's for the current, for the Saylorville expansion, it's a hundred and sixty million dollars for ten million gallons, ten million gallons of water. Additional capacity. The next expansion will be another, from what I understand, is planned to be another ten million gallons of water per day, but it's going to cost like three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So the cost of producing water is going away.
And that's why it's essential that we act on something like this, because we somehow need to curb the use while we're setting money aside to be able to pay for the cost.
That's like planting grass that keeps green while it's out of water. He didn't have green grass with less water. Find us a grass that will do that as opposed to.
I'm sure sports turf would be happy to talk to you.
Or country yards. They look, they look nice. I like mine.
A yard of clover.
Clover turns peach green, man.
One of my brothers in Nevada has painted rocks, you know? But no, I, I think this is, uh, something we need to do here.
Any other discussion, council, or public comment? I get a motion to approve the first read?
Motion.
Second, motion by Cool, seconded by Mineke, any further discussion? Hearing none. Lindsay, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Cool?
Yes.
Mineke?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
All right, most carries. Item seven L, second reading of an ordinance granting to Mid-American Energy Company its successors and assigns the right and non-exclusive franchise to acquire, construct, erect, maintain and operate in the city of Norwalk, Iowa, a natural gas system and furnish and sell natural gas to the city and its inhabitants and authorizing the city to collect franchise fees for a period of twenty-five years. So we had a public hearing on this item and first reading at our last meeting, this is to replace local option sales tax on our natural gas bills with a one percent franchise fee. Like to also add that just a couple of days after our last council meeting, held normal, uh, mayor's chat in here. We had several people in attendance where they asked questions about the franchise fee. Uh, I was, I was impressed with the detail, the citizens, of the citizen questions and their desire to learn what, what was going on. Uh, I can't say they were excited about the establishment of a fee, but there seemed to be a genuine agreement that it was the right move to make. Their main issue was disagreement of the fee increasing beyond one percent. Jim, Gene or Luke, anything to add? No? All right, discussion from council or public comment?
Yeah, I, I was going to say one thing is, uh, you know, uh, I'm sad that we're forced to do this. You know, the, the law stuff is a way of saying, hey, we're good neighbors within our county. You know, people come here, they spend money. Norwalk people go there, they spend money, and it's a way of being a community. It's a way of like sharing, and, you know, uh, it makes me sad that we have to turn to doing this because we're saying, no, we got to keep it all. But I think we've been forced to make that decision. And overall, I would say that I'm sad at the overall perspective on taxes because it feels to me like, um, we're just, it's, it's another way that we're losing a sense, a sense of, hey, we're all in this thing together called a, a good city with good streets, good sidewalks, good, you know, good safety, good, good schools. And there's just, what's in people's ears saying, I kind of want to opt out of that now, just because I don't want to pay for that. So I'm getting on a hobby horse, I realize. But doing this, I'm just kind of like, shoot. It was nice that we were, even though maybe we were getting a lot of revenue, we were sharing it with our, our neighbors in Warren County. I like that perspective. So I, it's the right thing to do. They can do the same thing.
Yeah.
They aren't. Well, they will. They aren't. I, I mean, George, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just don't like the fact that our hand has been forced.
Yeah.
Let's get selfish.
Ri- right now, it looks like, I just looked up Indian Oaks, first time, okay, they got a five percent franchise fee right now.
And Johnston just went to five percent.
And did they do that explicitly? Because they're like, Johnston at least was like, we got to generate more revenue.
Yes, to replace, it's, it's a House File seven eighteen deal, yes.
No, they wouldn't have done that.
Correct, I think that's true. Yeah. All right, any other discussion, council or public comment?
Motion.
All right, motion by Cool for second reading, seconded by Mineke. Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Mineke?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
All right, motion carries. Item seven M, it's the second reading of an ordinance granting to Mid-American Energy Company its successors and assigns the right and non-exclusive franchise to acquire, construct, erect, maintain and operate in the city of Norwalk, Iowa. An electric, you know, electric system to furnish and sell electric energy to the city and its habit and its inhabitants and authorizing the city to collect franchise fees for a period And authorizing the city to collect franchise fees for a period of twenty-five years. Got a public hearing on this item and first reading in our last meeting. This is to replace local option sales tax on our electric bills. With one percent franchise fee. Anything else to add, Jim, Luke, Jean? Discussion from council or public comment?
Oh, one more thing. I was, I asked a few of my friends if they knew that they were even paying this one percent. And they're like, no idea.
For a while it was four percent.
Yes.
Wow. You remember I mentioned when we got together with the ministerial association? There was more than one pastor that said they weren't sure if they were filed as exempt and paying the local option sales tax. Yeah. I'm not saying that's a positive or negative for it. It was just an interesting thing that it didn't show up on the radar. Maybe it wasn't that big of a deal. All right, can I get a motion to approve second reading?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Cool seconded by Minneke. Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Minneke.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
All right, most carries item seven N. It's the second reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Norwalk, Iowa. To adopt the Norwalk Technology and Industry Overlay District. So we had a public hearing and our first reading. Of the addition of the overlay district to our ordinances at our last meeting. Elliot, anything to add?
Uh, per Luke Paris, he added what council decided on for the makeup of the NTI review committee to the ordinance.
Okay. All right, so can I get or any discussion from council or public comment? I get a motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
Reading as amended, I got a motion by Brown seconded by, I think, Cool. Uh, Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Minneke.
Yes.
All right, most carries item eight, future agenda items. Purpose for this is for council to give direction to staff by way of motion. To have items placed on future agendas. It's not for a discussion of the merits of the subject matter. Do we have any future agenda items tonight? Harry None will go on. Council requires some staff updates. Number nine, I'd like to remind everybody that this portion of the meeting is much less formal. Uh, you may hear some back and forth banner and general joking around. We believe this could build camaraderie and cohesiveness between staff and council. But please keep it professional. Jim?
Uh.
Gotta talk about this, Jim. Look at that.
Well, I guess so. Uh, that, that's my daughter Olivia. Uh, she had her first college outing pitching softball last weekend down in Texas. And she had three games that she pitched and as a result, she was named athlete of the week for the Iowa. I'm not sure what is it, NJCAA con- conference. So all the junior colleges in Iowa, she was named athlete of the week for it. So she did pretty good for her first outing in college.
Lot of hours sitting on a bucket. Anything else?
Uh, I assume you'll talk about annexation, so we'll let you do that.
I can do that.
Our leader during that, so you could take the glory of talking about it.
Okay, uh, George. Ed?
Uh, no, sir.
Elliot.
Real quick thing, a little bit extracurricular. You guys know that I sometimes send you articles and, and interesting tidbits I run across. Uh, two weeks ago today, Donald Shute passed away. If you don't know that name, don't be embarrassed. He wrote a high cost of free parking, which came out in uh, two thousand and five. Um, it's a, the book is big enough to be used as a weapon. Um, but it has become kind of staple literature in our field. And he was a, he's a very, very funny guy. He's got some TED Talks that are interesting to listen to. Um, his actual website is shootdog.org. So a very enlightened fellow, uh, but he passed away two weeks ago and just, uh, you know, encourage you to check out his material if you're uh. Ridiculously bored. That's all I got.
That was good. Thank you. Carrie?
Nothing tonight.
Wait.
With the warm weather coming next week, we're gonna have a lot of melting and we'll have refreezing at night. That turns into pothole season. So if you get complaints from residents, we do have a form on our website where people can go and report potholes. Uh, we will be out filling them next week. So if they let us know, we love it when we hear from people telling us where they're, where they have issues. At the next city council meeting, I'm gonna have a contract from both uh, on the agenda to engineer what's called a dowbar retrofit project on Fiftieth Avenue. This will be a project from North Avenue to County Line Road. If you drive that segment, you'll feel bumps. The joints are starting to offset. Uh, this project will put dowars at the joints, then we'll diamond grind it to smooth it out. It'll add about fifteen more years of life to that road. I'm just telling you now, my plan, I'm telling you now because my plan is to use the reallocation of the ridge money, the money we had set aside for that assessment project. We tried hard to find a project that's gonna affect a large percentage of the community. But it can be a full rebuild because I don't want it to start over another assessment project. I'm just trying to stay out of that for now. Um, so we're proposing to use the money on that. That'll be on the next agenda. That's it.
All right, Mr. Fire Inspector.
Nothing.
All right, Chief.
Yeah, since the last council meeting, unfortunately, we, at the police department had two resignations of officers. Um, one for medical reasons and one change of family circumstances. Both were. Um, not really anticipated. So to uh, fill those gaps, uh, you'll see at the next meeting a request for funding for um, academy training. And we are hiring now, looking for two good applicants, or actually we have one applicant in the pipeline. So we're looking for one applicant now. If we find it. Uh, just wanna point out that because the academy is cycling. Uh, when they start and when they end and where we are, a hiring process just starting. Um, from today, it'll be fifteen months. Um, before we have a person in position, trained and operating on the roads by themselves. To replace the officer that resigned last week. So just wanna put that in perspective. That's all, sir.
All right, thank you. Jean Kelly?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Holly?
You have some business updates. Um, for retail and restaurants, just a lot of tentative opening planning date, planned dates. So the Sportsplex Norwalk facility is open. So that's kind of uh, within the, the bigger Sportsplex facility next to our field house. That's the indoor turf and sports training. So you might have seen that on news stories. They're doing good. Ember Market Vivid Life Spa will be opening soon, probably the next couple of months. Bullets still scheduled for early April. Pin High Golf is planning for June. Christian Brothers Automotive this spring. Um, Cooper Central Table and Cocktail, as you know, has been open for a couple of weeks, doing super great. They're doing so well that there's already maybe some talks of expansion. In their really near future. Something cool with them is they are working with the Fairfield and I'm sure they'll be working with the Hilton as well once they're open, but they, their guests that stay at the Fairfield can put their food. On um, their Cooper's food on their hotel tab. So it's kinda cool. And then their outdoor patio will open this spring. Sunset Lounge is now open, already super packed and popular. Uh, so it's not just a cocktail lounge, it's got the whole food menu. So that's kind of another just cool option for people to have. Hot Work Studio is looking to open by mid-March. Um, just another great health and fitness opportunity for residents. Pizza Ranch would like to open sometime this year. Um, I know they're still kind of in their early stages, but. Them having an arcade is kind of a cool thing for families and all the kids that'll be here um, over the summer for the tournaments and everything at Sportsplex. So that's another good option. New Art. Hilton Hotel also plans to open by late winter this year. They've had lots of displays, a lot of electricity and things like that that, um, you know, we all deal with. Nutrismoothy Cafe and Bakery at the Sports Affiliates that's under construction north of Chatham. Plan to open by summer. Also have an outdoor patio and then they're working on another development next door that'll include more retail and fitness, fitness center. Um, we have another new upscale restaurant coming to the former Warrior Run Clubhouse. They'll announce details on that soon, in a couple of weeks. Hyper Energy Bar will be building south of Subway in Norwalk Central, a double drive-through, super popular, um, all places, especially with sports and recreation areas.
Nothing but healthy drinks coming out.
Lots of caffeine, as you know, we like. And then the credit union will be building just south of Hyper, um, plan to start this year as well. I've done industrial flex buildings are full, so they'll be announcing all their tenants soon. The Kosovo State Elegation Trip tentative dates are June twenty-second through the twenty-seventh. If you're interested in that, please reach out to me. The Washington DC Legislative and Economic Development Trip is May seventh through ninth. So talk to Nelson and or Jean about that and budget. Um, and then on Tuesday, if you wanna talk about Governor. And then, oh, it's super fun. Um, DMS is, they will be making an announcement this week. We'll put out a press release that they purchased land along Highway twenty-eight. In Turnberry to build a new clinic. Um, they'll start this year around twenty thousand square feet. Facility, orthopedic, urgent injury clinic. Um, they'll also have physical therapy and sports performance training. They will plan to be open by spring of twenty-sixth. And then lastly, check out our new website. We have the Southwest Development Corridor. Could email you that link, but even if we just Google Southwest Development Corridor, it'll pop up. Um, it includes our economic development guide as well and it's just a really cool comprehensive place for people to be able to get every bit of information. Going on in that whole area, including the annexation, developers looking for land or landowners looking to be included. Infrastructure utilities, you name it. So it's kind of, kind of cool. Let us know if you see anything that needs to be changed. And that's it.
All right, Chief Strickland.
Would you like? I just wanted to point out, I did deliver the March-April activity calendar, so please take a look. There's. Twenty-nine activities for all ages in there and we would love to have you stop in and see what our residents are up to. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Robin said she didn't have anything, so Lindsay?
Nothing.
All right, uh, Jason?
So the Norwalk girls team finished the season with one loss. Uh, they're ranked fourth in state. And uh, so they start their state, you know, journey on Saturday. With, you know, if you have any interest or time, come join us at the Field House for that game. Uh, they're a lot of fun to watch. And we, we had two girls that were first team all-conference, two girls that were second team all-conference, two girls that were honorable mention all-conference. So six. It's like one more than a starter. Uh, so uh, it's the tide for the best season in Norwalk history. Um, and we were champion, co-champions of the conference this year. We beat DCG for the first time in nine years. Uh, I don't know the last time we were champions of our conference. And so, and you know, if you come, pay attention to the five-nine, real jumpy. Afraid to take shots. Stealing the ball, passing for assists, rebounding, doing all the things good coaches like. Pearl Brown. Also should say this, since we're bragging about kids. I think my middle son may have run the fastest mile of anyone who's ever lived in Norwalk. So he ran a four oh six out of Boston. So Tony Ananhea, who's a senior, he ran a four oh six something sixteen hundred at state. So I'm sure he's gonna try and beat that this year if he's a senior. But Jack didn't even do track in high school. He did soccer. So anyway.
Nice.
Yeah, I know that his goals are more, he's a sophomore. It's, he wants to run faster than four oh six, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for listening.
Uh, just a few items. Uh, I, I wanna commend the mayor on his mayor's chat that did happen uh, last Saturday, two Saturdays ago. Um, it's good that you put that on. I know you host that. Sometimes you don't get a lot of participation. Uh, but the mayor invites me, he says, Luke, I want you to be there. It's a nice invite. And I'm there and I was there at that one and um, I, I was pleasantly surprised with, I don't know, maybe a dozen people.
Yeah.
Several outside corporate limits, several from inside corporate limits on a couple of different issues. And I am quite confident that every person left that feeling better. Not saying happy, but feeling better about the decisions from the city because they had a chance to speak it face to face, one-on-one with what was going on with them. So I'm glad you do those. I know that takes time out of your Saturday morning. Uh, in case any of our staff doesn't realize that it helps us as staff a lot by him being willing to answer those questions with the public. So thank you for doing that.
I wish it was better attended. I'll just say that.
Yeah, and unfortunately, the way I think that you uh, get better attendance is by frustrating some folks. I hate to say it, but that's generally what gets people out, not necessarily the good news and we have so many good things happening. Sometimes that just doesn't bring them out as much. Uh, the other thing I wanted to note is uh, Doug Stout is a local staffer for Congresswoman Miller Meeks. And he's done a pretty good job of being attentive to things happening in Norwalk. Uh, he brought the Congresswoman up last week and we presented her with this. Uh, graphic, this information, little flyer that we gave her that talked about the new interchange and also the I four thirty-five. Interstate designation. Uh, I was impressed that she knew exactly what we were talking about with the interchange. She had remembered that when we uh, visited her in DC. And also when she was here last, so just pretty neat that she took the time and Doug thought of us to bring her up for a visit. And.
Can you hold that up there for a sec?
Yeah.
Um, you know, Ty's a good photographer, but how do y'all feel about my picture?
I just texted her.
It looks awkward. If you want the truth.
I did, no, in all fairness, I said, Ty, I think I need to get a new picture. She's like, sure, anytime. And then I haven't done it.
Yeah, the flag is. Flag's not there.
Do you think I look a little stiff?
I think you look like a high school football player. I was trying to make him look like a girl.
You guys have seen, like, I'm not exactly. Mr. Olympia, you know, so. All right, I am now gonna close this. That's all. Uh, I was gonna mention about annexation, but I figured you could cover that one. Uh, on the twelfth. We could go Wednesday, uh. Staff and myself, I was on via Zoom, but uh, we met with the city development board about our annexation. Uh, went through, it was probably about a two-hour public hearing. And at the end, the city development board approved our annexation. So we're in a thirty-day review period at this point in time. So. Things went well.
Mm-hmm.
So good job, staff.
They're, they were impressed with the submittal. I point that, I mean, it's uh. A lot of them, you just see people not showing up for their hearings and filling out, filling in forms, not really providing a lot. And I think the uh. Hours that were spent on that. But whole staff putting together maps and assembling things, uh, they were quite complimentary of that. They pointed out and saying how good it was and I think they really appreciated it.
Ed, there was at least one of the board members that indicated that uh, we did everything right. It looked like this is the way that it's supposed to happen.
Yeah.
Good.
And after a two-hour presentation, there were hardly any questions whatsoever. So I take that. And I take that to mean that hopefully the presentation answered all the questions. So that was kinda cool.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then uh, on Tuesday, on Tuesday, Holly and I went down to Governor's Office. Where Governor Reynolds signed a proclamation, proclamation recognizing the seventeenth anniversary of Kosovo's independence. So that was really good.
Good.
All I have. All right, item ten. It's closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty dot seventeen-three to discuss labor negotiations for police department bargaining unit agreement. Jim, is this about a recent go in closed session?
Yes, it is.
Can I get a motion to go in closed session?
Motion.
Can I get a second? Okay, so. Wow, I didn't think we were gonna go in closed session. Uh, motion by Minneke seconded by Brown. Lindsay, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Minneke.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
All right, that motion uh, carries. It is eight oh four.